I'm going to call the meeting to order and the board's going to move so we can watch these lovely people sing to us, and then we'll pick up on the agenda.
Yes, welcome North Buncombe High School under the direction of Ms. Jenny Graham. I would like to introduce Stephanie Dillingham and Molly Sullivan to make further introductions. Welcome.
Good evening. We are North Buncombe High School Chamber Choir under the direction of Jenny Graham. Chamber Choir is an auditioned year-long class of 24 women. We perform throughout the year at various athletic events, formal programs, concerts, and North Carolina small and large ensemble music performance adjudication. Every two years, we travel for a nationally adjudicated choral festival. Chamber Choir has taken five trips to New York City with heritage festivals in the last 10 years. This April, we will travel to Orlando, Florida to compete at Festival Disney at Walt Disney World.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Legault, and this is my third year in Chamber Choir. Our first selection is Non Nubis Domine by William Bird. We will be demonstrating on solfege first, and then repeating this piece on words. Solfege is a system of syllables and hand signs representing where on the scale the pitch lies. This allows us to lay out melodic structures so that later we may add more musical nuance without having to worry about where the pitches are. Without further ado, Non Nubis Domine.
Before we sing our final piece, I would like to thank Robert Waller, who called me back in June and asked me if we would come and sing for this event, and I really appreciate that invitation. It's been fun to practice for this and to know that we are sharing our love of music with the board members and people at the county office and other folks and guests. I'd also like to thank Robert Waller and all of the office, the county office staff and people that do work up here for all of your support for the fine arts and all of the work coming across the county. We really do appreciate everything you do for the fine arts. It means a lot to us, and it's something we hold near and dear to us, so we appreciate all of your support. To Madam Chair and Madam Chair in Franklin, who I've known for a very long time, she's over there. My first year as Speaker of Council at North Buncombe, and thank goodness for her daughter, because she was speaking while you were president, and I didn't know anything I was doing, so Laura Franklin was my favorite again. So she's been a great supporter of everything at North Buncombe, and we appreciate you. And of course, through our current school, Jack Evans, Buncombe High School's principal of the year, and a huge supporter of the fine arts at North Buncombe. We are so happy to hear our principal, and thank you for everything you do for us. But thank you to all of our parents who came, and I thank you for the commitment. We wish you a happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and we want to celebrate with one thing we have with our final piece, the First Noel. Sort of a woodgrass version, avalanche version. We try to cover all of our concert areas in music, so we hope you enjoy this final piece, and thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight.
The First Noel, the angel did say, was to certain poor shepherds in fields as they lay. In fields where they lay keeping their sheep, on a cold winter's night that was so deep. Noel, 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 born is the King of Israel. They looked up and saw a star shining in the east beyond them far, and to the earth it gave great light, and so it continued both day and night. Noel, 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 born is the King of Israel. This star drew night to the northwest. Over Bethlehem it took its rest, and there it did boast up and stay right over the place where Jesus lay. Noel, 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 born is the King of Israel. Thank you, guys. I do appreciate the difference in the singing. From when you sing? No, the difference in the country version and the upper-class version. Tonight is not the night for me to get in trouble, but thank you all for coming. I'm sorry. You know, Mr. Evan, you don't have to leave with all those parents. Okay, I want to thank the North Buncombe Choir. Each one of us gets so proud when it's our district that is displayed, and it's my district tonight. And the... We're going to make adjustments on this agenda, which we will approve in just a minute. We now have the presentation of colors by the Inca High School ROTC.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Orders, come. Ask orders, come. Color of this, next.
Are you going to?
I'd like to converge from your...
Please.
...interior area for just a moment, and to highlight our ROTC program at Inca High School, one chief eagle and one of the ROTC instructors at Inca. And recently, we just had this fact. The inspection has taken about thirty-three years, and it is last one. To give you an example, there's nine hundred and eighty-two Air Force ROTC programs across the nation. That inspection is very involved. It looks at every aspect of our program: the curriculum, the facilities, the students, how we conduct business, uniforms, money, everything you can imagine. This book is an example that is that evaluation. This book, if you'll notice all these tabs on it, was the result of my cadet corps. I cannot express to you what looking at these colors means to me as a teacher and instructor, the amount of engagement that each of the students in our corps, by the way, it's 226 of them, did in order to come out with such a stellar result. Ladies and gentlemen, this is my cadet corps or cadet leadership, y'all would come over to the center here. I would like to ask Superintendent and Mr. Max Queen, and of course, our principal at Inca High School, Miss Robinson, to come down. The results of the evaluation that we were designated as a unit of high distinction...
I'll give it to you.
...as qualified as a distinctive extinguish unit, with honors. Of the nine hundred and eighty-two schools that had inspected, less than fifteen percent used to do that stat. So this was a remarkable undertaking. Couple of comments that the evaluator made were, he had never seen an organization that was so cadet-led that he was very much impressed. His comments to Miss Robinson, as I remember, were along the lines of, "In his six years with evaluating units, this is the second time that he has asked with the decks to come in and hear his presentations, the principal's, and the results of the evaluation." It's... Would be... It's our request that y'all will place this on our Inca flag to note that we have reached this accomplishment. Each of those pennants on our flag represent the honors that Inca High School has received in the past since nineteen... When was the year?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. (Laughter). I think it was sixty-nine, Mr. Superintendent, prior, but you were seventy-three relative to...
Seventy-three.
The young lady with the brocade on her shoulder, she is our cadet commander, that's Miss Baird, and the young gentleman on his far left, or her far left, is the deputy commander. The other two, the young man holding the flag, is head of our Kiddy Home Air Society. His name is Chris Kelly, and the young lady closest to me, who is a junior, and thank goodness, she's my corporal manager today, she's already been telling you all that, is I call her Hawaii. She's Hawaii Santi'ala. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Do you have things you want to say, Mr. Queen?
I'm just...
Not to put you on the spot.
I'm proud of the Air Force Junior ROTC at Inca High School. It has been a mainstay at that school for many years. As Chief Eagle reported, the program began, I believe, in 1969. I was fortunate to be part of that program. I graduated in 1973. But no matter whether you go into the military or other avenues for your life, the qualities and the characteristics that they instill in those young men and women make a difference in those people. So he should be congratulated, and the program should be congratulated.
And as I said previously, each of us are so proud when our high schools are highlighted, and we appreciate all that work. So I believe our attorney, Mr. Donahue, will take over at this time for the election of the board chair.
Good evening, board members. This is the December meeting after an election, so it is your organizational meeting, and as such, you have two duties before you tonight. One is the election of a chairperson, and the other is the election of a vice-chairperson. Is there a motion on the floor to open for nominations for board chair?
I move that we open the floor for nominations for board chair.
Is that seconded?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It has been moved and seconded and voted on to open nominations. Are there any nominations for board chair?
I would place the nomination, current chair, Ann Franklin.
Are there any additional nominations for board chair?
I would move the nominations to be closed.
There's been a motion on the floor to close the nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Presently before you is the nomination of Ann Franklin as chair for the Board of Education. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
Do I now have a motion to open the floor for nominations for vice-chairperson?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The board is now open for nominations for vice-chair.
I would like to nominate Chip Craig to serve another year as vice-chair.
Are there any further nominations? If not, do I hear a motion to close the floor for nominations for vice-chair?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Presently before the board nomination is Chip Craig as vice-chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. And that concludes the organizational portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll approve our agenda. It's a little convoluted, as this meeting is. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've approved the agenda. It is now time for the superintendent's comment.
I just can't pass up the opportunity to expand upon what we began in recognizing our ROTC and initially recognizing our fine arts program. We spent a lot of time at our previous meeting. In fact, I guess if we think about it, we spent two meetings in a row talking about performance grades for schools. And that particular performance grade was certainly heavily weighted on academic testing. I think what we just saw clearly in front of us tonight is the argument of how one single letter grade reflecting academic testing is a fallacy when you truly look at the quality and the grading per se of an entire school. We are so privileged to have the type of extracurricular supports that occur and is an expansion of that school beyond the classroom. One of those we saw tonight with our corral from North Buncombe High School, and what an incredible performance. I was very privileged on Tuesday afternoon to be at Charter Communications, where they recognized nine of our high school students. And throughout the... I don't know if you have had an opportunity to visit Charter Communications. It is the roundhouse building right beside the Carolina Movie Theaters.
Do you go there often?
But it was a... I go to the movies quite a bit. First time for Charter Communications. But they had sponsored a competition where we had, actually, I think, eleven paintings, drawings that were submitted, and from those, nine scholarships were provided to individual high school students. And those paintings are now proudly displayed inside the new Charter Communications building. And I had an opportunity, I got there a little bit early and walked around, and I initially said, "I hope someone's watching, because I think I may take three or four of these off the wall." And all of a sudden, I look back there, and there were about a half a dozen employees glaring at me, because they have taken so much pride in that. So I want to thank Charter Communications again, just recognizing the importance of the arts. Certainly, our ROTC unit tonight, the Inca unit, was on display, but that same display takes place in each one of our six high schools. Outstanding. All of those units are recognized on an annual basis. And just having recently left the state board meeting for the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, I was very proud to see a number of our high schools recognized in several ceremonies that took place down in Chapel Hill. So again, I just want to just reemphasize how fortunate we are in this school system to have the wonderful support programs that each and every one of those represent families within that school for our students, and in most cases, for those parents as well who were in attendance tonight. I want to thank the New Asheville Outlets Management for hosting a very successful countdown to kindergarten event that took place back in mid-November. We were very pleased. In fact, I think Candy Sellers is Candy... Here she is. Yeah, I want to thank Candy again for all that planning and work that took place. We had over, well over a hundred parents that took part in that event, and we had representation from every single one of our elementary schools, and I think several of you had an opportunity to walk through, and that will certainly be the first of hopefully many events to come in the future. So get plenty of rest, Candy. We'll... It'll be even bigger and better next time.
It's the road show.
It's the road show. But it was extremely well done. On your agenda tonight is the final edition of the 2015-2016 Buncombe County Schools budget. Now, that's a little odd to say in that it is December, and it's now finalized for the school year. Needless to say, we've already experienced almost four months of school. So when you look at the timetable and timeline, we've talked a lot about this regarding the state budget coming to us late in October one, and also realizing that the majority of the funding that we depend upon for that $220 million operating budget comes from state funds. comes from state funds, almost 65% to 67% of that. So when you combine the delay with the dependence, it, it is extremely challenging to receive that in October and, uh, make sure that we fine tuned it to the best of our ability to meet the needs in a system of our size. And we certainly could not do that without an incredible finance department. Our chief finance officer, Deborah Frisbee, is, uh, is sick. She's unable to be here. In fact, uh, I left for Chapel Hill two days ago. And before I left, I stepped in her office and she could hardly speak. So I had that funny feeling, I may not see her tonight. But we're very fortunate in that we have an outstanding assistant CFO, Roger Warren. And Roger is here tonight to answer any of your questions. But again, I just really want to thank that department and, and all of our staff, both here at the central office and in the schools, that were pulled together following October 1 and, and those final details to make sure that the very comprehensive document that you have in front of you is as accurate as possible. So that ends my comments. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. We are skipping some items on the agenda. We've already had the good news, you know, with Inca and North Buncombe. So anyhow, we're down, I need to let you know that Mr. Plas is out of town. He's probably flying the friendly skies right now. And we will miss him tonight, but go on without his presence. At this time, it's, uh, public comment.
Yes, ma'am. We have Lisa Baldwin.
Good evening. Uh, as Dr. Baldwin just said, the state component of your budget is the largest, next to county and federal funding. And tonight, you'll be approving that, uh, portion along with the county and the federal funding. So what did the state legislators budget for Buncombe? The state is fully funding student enrollment growth. But wait a minute, that doesn't affect Buncombe County schools because enrollment has declined by over 1,000 students in the past two years. The state's also funding $750 one-time bonuses for teachers, central office, and school-based administrators to be paid in December of this year. Of course, that's in addition to the $600,000 plus in bonuses for principals and assistant principals allocated by the county. The state increased beginning teacher salaries to $35,000. And when you add in the benefits, that's a total of $52,000 for a 10-month beginning teaching position. Step increases are being given to teachers and school administrators based on their experience. Teaching assistance are fully funded. Driver's education was reinstated, um, and provides for future funding to continue the program. The delay was caused by the high failure rate on student driving exams. The state considered putting the driver's ed program at the community colleges for better supervision. Textbooks are being funded. Buncombe's receiving about $700,000 for textbooks this year. This is in addition to county money that's also allocated for instructional supplies and textbooks. There's more money coming for technology and to connect schools to the internet. There'll also be money to expand the reading camps. This is for struggling readers now for, in first and second grade. Before, the summer camps were just for third grade. And, uh, this is going to, uh, hopefully continue to bring up the levels, the reading proficiency for these children. The opportunity scholarship funding is increasing by $6.8 million for this school year and $14 million for the next school year, offering parents choices in education. But tonight's approval of the state, county, and federal funding can be tweaked. And the best way, um, to look at that is, for example, the roofing projects on your agenda. If you bundle these together and bid them out as one project, you would be able to slash that $900,000 price tag. It's a no-brainer to bundle these roofing jobs and it's the best way to save education dollars. In fact, uh, the 39 million you're approving for capital outlay construction projects.
Thank you. This time, I'll ask Ms. Swanger to come forward and enlighten us about our school calendars at the middle college, early college, and the middle college and the early college. Thank you.
Last month, you approved the calendar for our-
For comprehensive schools. And tonight, we're bringing to you the early college calendar and the middle college calendar. Both of these programs are located on the campus of AB Tech. We have two calendars for middle college following the same pattern of our comprehensive calendar, draft one and two, because those classes look like our comprehensive high school. We do have some students who take AB Tech courses, but we're able to balance the calendar that you see in front of you. The difference is the early college calendar. And you only have one draft to approve this evening. That is because we must mirror the AB Tech schedule. And as Mr. Queen knows, that's of high importance because many of our students are in those classes all day long. So a few differences in start dates, but always to ma-, to make better educational opportunities for those students. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board, do you have questions for Ms. Swanger?
We are completing an FAQ and a parent-friendly calendar that you will see very soon.
That was not my question, but thank you. So just to clarify with the waiver, make sure I understand that. That has to do with when school can start in the beginning of the year, is that correct?
Correct.
But it looks to me like both of these drafts start on the same date.
Early college has a bit more flexibility because they fall under an early college high school model. And so-
But I'm looking at draft one and draft two of middle college?
Yes.
And it looks like they both start on the 18th of August.
They do. Again, we have several students at middle college who take early college courses and AB Tech courses. The way we have to balance middle college to have the same working days and to try to end at the same time because we have high school teachers who teach high school courses, we put in no days. So it's quite confusing, but you will see white boxes throughout the calendar of first semester. We seem to catch up with second semester and we mirror the AB Tech calendar a little bit better. Middle college is expected to end when our comprehensive high schools finish in June. Early college often finishes closer to AB Tech's schedule.
Thanks.
Any other questions? For those of you on the board that haven't had the opportunity to attend a meeting where they develop this calendar, it might, and you want to watch, it might be a good opportunity. You might want to take that opportunity and listen to the input and angst that they go through in developing this calendar. I would like to, without objection, I'd like to couple those two items, the middle college calendar and the early college calendar into one, for one vote. Is there objection? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the cal-, the recommendation of the calendar for middle college 2016-17, both drafts, and for the early college 2016-17 calendar draft.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Swanger.
Thank you.
Now it's time for the adoption of the 15-16 budget. Come on down, Mr. Warren. At this time, board members can address their questions to Mr. Warren.
I have a, a general, kind of a general question. Well, I'm always surprised when I read through this thing of how little the school system actually controls of the budget. It seems like there's always an allotment or designated to a certain fund and it doesn't seem like there's a lot of freedom. Do you, just a rough estimate of, you know, is it 40% of the budget that we control? Is it 90%? Is it 98%?
Well, technically, all of our money has some sort of restriction on it, whether it's current expense funds, state funds, or capital funds. The most flexible that we have are the dollars that come from the county commission, which is about 24%, 25%. So, um, those are the funds that we have that grant us the most flexibility.
And then our fund balance, if we happen to use that? Would pres-, would give us the, is that correct? I mean, obviously, we can do whatever we want to with the fund balance.
Right, right. And that's, that's local current expense funds that I'm talking about too. That have carried over from year to year.
If I'm reading this right, we're spending about 6.5, 6.6 million of our fund balance in this current budget, which is somewhat scary because it's not reoccurring. I mean, it's not a, we'll have to keep dipping into it if we don't change things. How is our current fund balance right now?
So, um-
And I know there's different designations of fund balance.
Right. So the, the three, um, types of fund balances that are important right now are committed fund balance, which we have 5 million committed that, um, the board set away in the board meeting, or in the policies to save one month's operating expenditure for local current expense. That's 5 million in the committed section. We assigned $6.5 million for subsequent year's expenditures this coming year. We only appropriated that. We do not anticipate having to spend the entire amount. So just to give you an, an example, last year, we appropriated 6 million and spent about 1. So we anticipate the same sort of return this year, depending on flexibility and cost-saving throughout the year.
Okay.
But yes, the, as we continue to run in, or go into fund balance from year to year, that is a concern going forward.
And this is a very, in the scheme of things, a very small question dollar-wise. But I was just curious, um, and this is, and this is, again, this kind of in the weeds a little bit, but the parking security, um, PRC 845. We budgeted $109,000 in parking permit fees. I'm sorry, yeah, 109 was our budget last year. We, our actual was $56,000. And then our budget for this year is 114. So it just, it doesn't seem like, uh, it seems to me you would budget what was either actual or what, closer to what's actual, not half of what's actual.
Okay, so for the, for everybody else, the, um, page he's referring to is under tab 6, page 51. So what, to, to explain the parking security. So we have to pay for the decals and different other supplies for the high schools to allow them to park, to make sure that those vehicles are the ones that are supposed to be in the spot. In addition, we have a security contract with an outside organization to make sure that vandalism is cut down and those type of things. The $56,000 that you're referring to are the monies that we get from the schools to help offset those costs. We do not get reimbursed 100% from the parking fees that we generate through this. So the remaining, if you'll see, the actual expenditures were 104,000. So the difference between the two, um, we made up with indirect costs allocated that we're allowed to charge the different federal grants that we get. Another example of when we do that is the JROTC program that we have. We do get a subsidy from the federal government for that, but it does not fully sustain the program. Those type of programs, we use indirect costs that we, um, are able to charge the federal grants and other, and child nutrition grants to cover those costs.
So you should have charged my son more.
Well, no, um, each, each of those, each of those student fees-
Did you see that dollar sign slipping his eyes?
Yeah, no, each of those fees, you know, we try to keep as reasonable as possible because of obvious reasons, but each of those fees are mandated by, uh, you got, the board, whenever we, and it's their max, their max, yeah.
We should have charged my son.
Right, well.
Anyone else have questions?
I would like to follow up on a question Mr. Craig raised. And that is, uh, since the state budget, basically, um, pretty much all of it is designated funds. There are strings attached. They can spend it for certain things, not other things. And you mentioned that the county, with approximately 24% of our budget comes from county sources. And that was more flexible. But I guess my question is, of that 24%, how much of that 24% is actually going to the salary supplement to our employees? And if we take that out, then really, how much? That's really obligated, I mean, we're committed to that. So how much flexibility do we really have?
Well, that's a good point. So, um, our county appropriate appropriation this year is a little over 53 million. Our supplement runs between 15 and 18 million a year. That, that's for certified and non-certified employees. So you're looking at the difference as to, um, how much is actually flexible. And to clarify, the one thing about the state that they have allowed in the, in the past few years, they have, uh, allowed flexibility, some flexibility. If you remember, during the budget process, a lot of, um, talk was about the teacher assistance. Last year, we were able to move some money, if, if necessary, in and out. This year, we cannot, um, which is, you know, it does not hurt Buncombe County schools one bit. So there, there is some flexibility, but again, there is pros and cons to the flexibility that they give us each year. Thank you.
If, if I could add to that, it's been my experience, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been my experience in nine years on the board that the state gives us flexibility shortly after they've cut money from previous budgets. Seriously, that's what they've done.
It is true.
There have been monies that have been cut. We're, we're going to give you less money from these two areas or these three areas, but we'll give you the flexibility to decide how you want to spend the less money in those two or three areas. So it, it, that's kind of been my experience in nine years of what, how that plays out.
And, and to add to that, going back to the teacher assistant thing, those counties that did move money from teacher assistance to another allotment category, the state assumed we did not need that money for teacher assistance. So that's the pros and cons that I'm talking about, that if, yeah, we're allowed to move it, but then it's in, you know, it sends a message to everyone looking at the reports, so.
And then, then the other game of fully funding teacher assistance. But the formula changed, so we're, they're giving us 90, what was it, 90,000 less?
90,000 less, yes.
Yeah, so they went from a dollar amount per K3 student to more of a quasi-position allotment where they gave us, um, I think it was three, um, three, no, two teacher assistants for every three kindergarten classrooms and it kind of phased out from there. And it was based on a average salary that DPI came up with. So the dollars were the same, but the, the, I guess the, it wasn't carried out exactly how the previ-, previous formula, formula had it.
They made it such a way that they couldn't fully fund it, so they saved money.
You could, yes.
You could speak into your microphone, Mr.-
I'm sorry.
When you say things like that. Any other questions?
Could I ask one of Dr. Baldwin? Dr. Baldwin, could you, I think it's always good for the public to understand, because one of the real marvels in my nine years on the board is how our finance folks have stretched dollars. And, and I don't know whether it should come from here or from you, but talk about the positional allotments and the different things we do with county funds. Because what we saw tonight, they're not funded the same, in the same manner, especially in our elementary schools, the, the, uh, the Fine Arts and those types of things from the state level. There's a different ways of funding. And so to stretch the dollars and do the best we can and have as many of those other things that we can have for our kids in our schools, we've been a system that I, in my opinion, has been very well-run from the finance part. If you could just kind of give a synopsis of the differences there and what we have to do.
Right, I would first agree that, um, that, that the system over the, certainly the years that I've been here at the central office have just, uh, been nothing less than, than, um- here at the central office have just been nothing less than, than this incredible fiscal responsibility and making the most out of squeezing blood from a turnip, how about that? And I think that's exactly what we've been able to do in terms of finding those, those extra dollars to try to cover the, the expanding personnel in our school system. And we, we hire over 4,000 personnel, that's full-time and part-time. And so, as Roger explained, what, what they've been able to, in my opinion, master is where the state has identified categories of positions that are paid X amount of dollars based upon the state average for positions, number of positions. And then they've been able to balance those with those positions that are strictly given just by, by dollars. And that, that takes an incredible amount of time, number one. It's very detailed. Essentially, it goes to every single category of personnel, and it's not only finance, it's working with our personnel department as well, hand in hand, just again, to maximize the resources. For lack of a better term, it's, it's a game, per se, that has to be played in order to maximize those resources, because there are restrictions that come. And part of those restrictions are in personnel, whether it's being paid by position or whether there's a dollar allotment. So how do you maximize, especially in those areas where the state really does not, does not cover, which gets outside of the core areas for, for our staffing. So Roger, you, I mean, you work with it on a daily basis? Any more details you could provide, or...
No, that's a, that's a good summary. What, what we try to make sure we do is the positional allotments he's talking about pay the most, typically the most senior teachers from there, because typically they're more, they cost more than a beginning teacher. So the state will pay, for example, this year, I think it's 1,100 teachers. And so if we pay all beginning teachers out of there, we're not maximizing that benefit. Where if we pay all the masters teachers with 30 years, we're getting our bang for our buck on that. So using that flexibility is, is good, but where he's talking about working with personnel, if we have a master's 30 teacher leaving and a very bachelor new person coming in, we have to communicate to be able to move the person to the right funding source.
Madam Chair, could I make a comment?
You certainly may.
Thank you. Just sort of along the lines of the strategies in playing the game, one thing that continues to come up as a question for this board is why we don't use capital funds for instructional expenses. And I think it's good for us to, to go back and visit that question, because I think that if you don't have professional experience with facilities management, if that's not something you really understand, that does seem like an obvious thing to do. Let's, let's not remove the building this year, or let's not do some other maintenance-type work, and instead, let's use that to pay our teachers or buy textbooks or something else. And so it seems like that might be an obvious solution. But from my experience, for instance, I was the director of operations at the YWCA of Asheville in the late '90s and early 2000. And for years and years, the budget there had been shrinking, and so maintenance had been deferred. And what that meant for that organization was that we had horrific turnover among our staff. Morale was terrible. Safety was horrible in the building. There were, there were accessibility issues. It was affecting our programs. It was affecting the licensing of our, of our childcare programs. And so there were many, many expenses that were incurred because of that. But then also, when you defer maintenance expenses, it ends up costing you more. And so I just want to reemphasize and make sure that the public understands that part of our fiscal responsibility in terms of saving money for our school system so that it can be spent on our instructional and classroom expenses, part of how we do that is by taking care of the ongoing maintenance of our buildings, so that they don't fall into such disrepair that it costs us more to then bring them back up to code. So I, so I just want to explain that and make sure that folks understand that it's not just that we're following the rules by not using capital funds to pay for instructional expenses. There are reasons that those rules are, exist to begin with, and that's to make sure that we do continue to, to take care of our buildings in an ongoing way. And I feel like that's important for the public to understand.
It is, it is indeed.
I would agree 100%. I think it's, it's all a question of balance, because you have, to run this school system, it's X amount of money. And you can throw your capital in operations and grants, you can throw it all together in one pot, but it's still a matter of balance. I don't recall, I thought I heard a speaker reference roofs. I can tell you, having sat on capital outlay committees since I came to central office, actually before that, as a principal at Reynolds High School, that the catastrophic, catastrophic event that we always, always talk about in capital outlay has to do with roofs. Because if there is an issue there, it can quickly, basically, close that school building down, and it is the hazards of all hazards. So if you close your eye to that potential roof issue, you could look up, and Mr. Fairley's probably lost some sleep at times. I've heard him talk about this. We could be, we could actually be in a situation where we're closing a school building because of severe roof damage.
Which then potentially hurts every other system of the building.
Absolutely. Instruction can't take place if you can't open the school building.
Well, and, and the structure of the building can, can become impaired also if, if the roof is not intact.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the budget? I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2015-2016 budget.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make that motion that we adopt the presented 2015-16 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Is there a second?
I'll second, thank you. Ms. Churchill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on the consent agenda tonight, we have the minutes of November 5, 2015 open session, the personnel report, facsimile signature stamp of the chair, and the Reynolds High School use of capital outlay. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, could I just ask, are the policies for second reading also included in the consent agenda?
No.
No?
So is that a separate vote for those policies?
There's no vote.
Or are we not voting on that tonight?
Policy.
So they're just for second reading, we're not voting on them?
I mean, it's not listed under the consent agenda, the way I see it on the agenda, so I would assume that there's going to be a second vote for the policies.
Okay.
It didn't kind of look that way, but we'd do it that way, okay.
Okay, that's fine.
So I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Were you, were you asking for a motion and a second, but you didn't ask for any further discussion?
Would you like to discuss something?
I did have one question, Madam Chair.
Okay, please, Mr. Queen.
And that has to do with the facsimile signature.
Uh-huh.
And I just wanted, as I read that, I, I can understand certainly what, what we need it for, but I'm just concerned about the security of the stamp. And I just would wonder if someone could explain how that will be maintained, the security of the stamp, so that it could not be used erroneously.
I, I think Mr. Dr. Baldwin and Kim could talk about that, but I do want to tell you and everybody in here that I don't believe they've used my facsimile stamp at all during this year. So maybe it's in the bottom of a drawer, locked somewhere. I have no idea. What would you say, Ms. Matthews?
The facsimile stamp is kept in the office in the drawer.
Locked drawer, okay.
And it's only used, I think...
When I'm not here. Yeah, thank you very much for the question.
Now everybody knows where it is.[1628.01][1628.01](laughter) We may want to move it.
I believe we might need to find a new place for that.[1635.63][1635.63](laughter)
Okay, all those in fa, did we vote for the consent agenda? I'm lost.
We can vote now.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please let it be numbers saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Policies for second reading. Policy 2610, the board attorney. Policy 5001, advisory councils to the board. Policy 9110, selection of use of architects, engineers, and construction manager at risk. Is there a motion to accept these policies?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the policies for second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And do we have any discussion? I wouldn't leave that out tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those pass. You have items on the information agenda, which is supplemental information that's in the 2015-16 budget, notification of informal construction and repair contracts for change orders, and our future meetings on Thursday, January the 14th, 2016, at 6:30. And that meeting is moved because of Christmas vacation, so that our staff doesn't have to work over Christmas vacation. And then the Board of Education's regular meeting is scheduled for February 4, 2016, at 6:30. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, good. Any opposed?[1736.83][1736.83](laughter) Y'all have a nice Christmas. Nice holiday. Hope Santa Claus finds you. I hope you've kept that.